Hi. Hi there.
Hey, I'm trying to unmute. Okay.
So I'm Gabe Volker.
Hi, Gabe.
Hi, and I was trying to do with you guys. So I booked this. I did write an email, but I never heard back.
Yeah, I just saw that. I don't know how I didn't get that before, and I'm sorry. I've been dealing with some family medical issues this week.
That's okay.
I haven't been as thorough as usual. So basically, we're just, we decided we're gonna, we're gonna can the policy meeting for tonight. And we're just gonna go ahead with the regular school committee meeting now that we can use this.
Okay.
I was just having trouble logging in under the normal. I'm usually under the meeting post two. Login, but it wasn't allowing me to start the meeting.
Yeah, I don't know how this Zoom is set up, but we are talking to the Zoom people because I really think everyone should book their own meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
And everyone should have their own login.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So yeah, I, I'm meeting with him on Monday. I think we can use this Zoom and expand it into a business Zoom instead of, you know, only four or five people being able to book meetings.
Okay.
So I'll keep you posted.
Okay.
And what I'm gonna do tonight.
Yep.
Is I'm gonna, you're gonna be the host.
Yep.
And I'm gonna leave. And let you just do what you need to do, and then you can just end the meeting.
Okay.
So. And you're coming in as shoots very.
Oh, yeah. I'm on, yeah, cuz I'm signed in under the normal logins that we use for, usually the meeting post two account is the one that we use on Thursday for the two meetings. So that's where I logged in. That's what I logged in under, assuming that I'd be able to start the meeting.
Mm hmm. I'm sorry.
It's all right. I didn't see your email. That's my, that's totally my fault.
So I think you're all set.
Okay.
Um, I last time when I did it was another group. I did not leave.
Yeah.
It's just blocked myself and muted everything so that I didn't hear anything.
Yeah.
And then they just ended the meeting. So if that's okay, I'm just gonna do that.
Yep, sounds good. Thank you very much.
And it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, Gabe. Nice to meet you.
You're welcome. You too. Have a good meeting.
Thanks. All right. Call this meeting of the shoots very cool, a school committee to order. Just apologize for anyone who's had struggles getting in. We just, it's a new process, new town administrator. And the way that we kind of set up these Zoom meetings is a little antiquated at the moment. So we're trying to figure that out. I don't see any members of the public present. So no public comment. Look at the agenda today. It's nothing too much out of the ordinary. Everything's pretty much the same. A perpetual calendar I did send out. I think I sent it out to everybody. I hope you guys saw that. Um. It surprisingly seems to be kind of still relevant. And so right now, we're talking about budget. The school council, I don't know what's going on with school council, but typically they'd be working with the school improvement plan. And we're getting ready for probably some more for town budget meetings soon.
They are. That's accurate.
Cool. And we're gonna, we're talking a little bit about the Union 28 budget as well, which Caitlin will be talking about at this meeting. So those are the things that are going on. Should probably take a look ahead in December as well. Of course, I just lost it.
Caitlin did just make a statement that her, she just got a new computer. Her video's not, but she is following along and can hear us.
Okay, great.
I'm really sorry. I'm trying my best to figure it out.
It's really just par for the course right now, Caitlin. It's just the way tonight's meetings are going.
I just sent Jenna a link. She's trying, so.
Thank you. I'm in. I'm in. Thank you, Anna.
Oh.
Yeah, there's Jen. All right. So, yeah, so that's perpetual calendar. There's nothing much on for December. So without further ado, I guess we can move on to warrants.
Before you move on, could I note that the FinCom will be meeting with school committee on February 4th? And it looks like you don't have a regular meeting on in February, but that will be an irregular meeting.
February 4th?
Yeah.
Thank you. Noted. All right, so warrants, gifts, grants.
So for warrants, I have two AP warrants, two payroll warrants. I, Trevor, I'm sorry, I just sent them to you. So it's a little late. But for AP, there's three zero zero nine from October 29th for $28,589.38. And three zero one zero from November 12th for $17,339.07. And then for payroll warrants, there's three zero nine from October 29th for $94,369.96 and three ten from November 12th for $94,070.45. There are no gifts at this time. I do have some grants, though, from for the IDEA grants. That is grant two forty for $43,919. That will be used towards out of district placements. And for grant two sixty-two for $2,549. That's used towards special education, peer professionals in early childhood. Three title grants, Title I, $18,112. Title II A for $2,480 and Title IV for $10,000.
And so we need to move and vote to accept the grants, right?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'm only my first time with grants, I think, since I've been running the, all right, so did I hear?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So all in favor?
Heard I.
My, you, I.
Jen, I.
Long go by.
All opposed? I'm staying. All right, unanimous. Moving on, we're looking at the minutes from October 17th. Does anybody have anything to say about that? Or should we move to accept them?
I'm moved to accept the minutes from October.
Second that.
All in favor? My, you, I.
Heard I.
Long go by.
That guy.
All right. So anyone against? Okay, so unanimous. Again, unfinished business, updates, capital projects, building process, discussion of roof boilers, kitchen floor, etc. Nate, is there anything to report?
Well, we, I did get a chance to sit down with Ann, which was pretty sweet. It was great to talk with you, Ann. And it seems like we're really up on things. And what I got was that there's not much on the agenda except for the driveway and sidewalk. And it looks like the driveway was repaired, though, you know, it may need to be replaced at some point. And Ann said that she has put in a grant for, I think, $50,000. Trying to snake in, it's like a solar grant, but trying to snake in some, you know, driveway improvements with that grant. So we'll see how that goes. But other than that, we're in good shape, in really good shape.
Does that mean we're applying for solar?
No.
Oh.
No, it's, it's separate. It's a, like an energy type of a, if you're, it's a way to promote using alternative, alternative energy sources. So it's not, so it's not putting in solar.
Boo.
Well, I mean, a big part of it could be because my trick on that grant was to say that we would have like a roof above a driveway of the, the parking lot. So then we could do that in the future or something. So I'm not sure they're doing, it's under review. So we'll see. I'm not, I'm not, I'm like, not too, too hopeful, but I figured it's worth a shot, you know? So.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right. Um. The other piece of business that we put on here was the idea of a PTO school committee outreach, the idea of trying to do some sort of meet and greets around school events or in some other way to kind of just outreach to the community. Does anybody have anything on that or anything to, any new contributions or thoughts on that? Um. I think one thing that I could do or somebody here could do, I, well, actually, are you on the PTO still?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
No, Anna.
You say Anna or Anna?
I said, I said Anna. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No, my, my youngest is in middle school now.
Right, so you're not on anymore. All right.
Yeah.
So the one thing I could do before our next meeting is to kind of reach out to the PTO and just see what sort of events we have planned in the near future and see if we can't coordinate some sort of, some sort of outreach with them. So I will take that on.
At the very latest, oh, sorry, at the very latest. The auction is an awesome time.
Yeah.
And the, if they do, they, sometimes they do a skating event. And sometimes they do soup and games. And I think those are both like highly, well, more soup and games even, but the community is always invited to soup and games.
Yeah.
Yep, I can speak to that. They have that planned for February twenty twenty eighth.
Okay.
And there's also on March 14th, it's gonna be Books for Bingo.
Oh, right, yeah.
That's always, that's always attended as well.
What's that? What was that one? I'm sorry, the date?
Um, Books for Bingo.
In March?
Uh, yep, that's the fourteenth. And then on the 27th, they're doing the PTO quarters fundraiser.
That's harder for school committee members to attend.
Daytime and then, um.
No, it's just like tiny. Yeah, and they sell out.
For, um, April 4th is the PTO trivia night. That would be helpful.
Yeah, those are all helpful to know for sure.
All right, so. Can I just, I have one thought, Ann. I'm wondering if that is something that your school council could maybe, sometimes school councils will bring in maybe a guest speaker or, you know, there's so many topics, whether it's, you know, the impact, you know, monitoring your children's social media or, you know, a topic like that might be something the school council could sponsor to come in and you could open it to the town. And it might be a good thing for school committee members. And there's typically, there's a lot of social service organizations that will partner to do that.
Great. Is there anybody who has a date preference? Or do you want to send me what dates might work?
You might have to start with who can come first.
Okay, good idea. Does anybody wanna?
Just from having done this before, you might want to, and, and maybe you can't get someone right now, but maybe you plan it for next year. It might be a good practice and it would be a great chance to get other, cuz it could really be anything that is pertaining to families. And then you might open it up to the community. It might be a good community outreach to get people in the school and that'd be a great chance for school committee to welcome people to the building and you know, say hello and all that stuff.
Okay, are Thursday nights usually good for people? Or is that, is that?
Yeah.
Give me a thumbs up if you think that might be a good place to start. Okay.
As long as it's not a school committee night.
Oh, yeah, I already knew that. Those are already blocked out, so.
And I know. And my oldest, my oldest son's school had done, has had a couple of these sort of things. So I could also just see who they've had and maybe send you some, some names too.
So that would be great. Thank you so much.
All right. So the other thing I just wanted to bring up on our new business, even though it's not necessarily on the agenda, was that there was some outreach from other committees in town about an idea of connecting the new library to to the elementary school by way of a woodland path that would keep students from walking on Leverett Road. It would require at least one easement on a private piece of property, but the rest of it would be across UMass Amherst property. Of course, you'd have to cross West Pelham Road and Pelham Hill Road. And has done some sort of preliminary digging. There is some concerns about sort of wetlands and animals and maybe the secluded nature of it. But I just wanted to let you guys know that that's something that's being discussed. And the thing that I think for my vantage point, the thing that kind of appeals to me about this is the idea of being able to get students who wanted to to be able to go to the library on days where it's open after school without necessarily, I guess, parent involvement. So obviously older students, but it's just a conversation that's happening in town as people start to look at CPA grants and sort of things to, to maybe fund some of it. And I know there'll be some outreach to the PTO, but just that that's something that's out there and maybe being discussed and we might want to have a position or think about, you know, both the aim and how you go about it as we move forward. But the idea of trying to connect this new library that's much closer to the elementary school, to the elementary school in some sort of way.
That's fantastic. That's great to hear. You know, I know that the first grade or second grade always take like a walk to the town. And so to have that as a link and to have like, think about like a whole class going that way and getting off that road, you know? I mean, even driving down, just the other day, like some guy just, you know, getting mad at me cuz I'm going the speed limit and it's just like, you know, a dog ran across the road, you know, it's a dangerous road. It's crazy.
I had a dog, I had a dog actually run into my car on that road when I was in college. Like it ran out of a property and into the side of my car.
Yeah, so anyway, I'm all for it.
Um, when they do walk from the school, when they go to the library, they get a police escort and the police have been found that, that, yeah, it hasn't had any issues with the past, so.
I just want to say too, I love the fact that Chutesbury has the walking field trips, whether it's to the library or to the apple orchard. Like I just think that that's just something that's very special about our school. All right, so anybody have anything to add on our new business? Anything else that needs to be discussed?
Does anybody know? I thought that there was supposed to be a special town meeting coming up. Is that gonna happen?
Suzie shaking her head, yes.
You're muted. It's on December 3rd. It got.
December 3rd, yeah. Cuz I was like, I thought it was November. I was like, oh, no, did I miss it? December 3rd, okay.
Okay.
Oh, the terror.
December 3rd. That's a Tuesday.
Right, most town meetings are on Tuesday, special town meetings.
What is the topic of the meet of the special town?
There are eight different warrant articles. I think six of them relate to money and a couple are just political.
Sounds like a good time.
One of them CPA funding?
Uh, yes, to approve the CPA money for the track project.
Yes, okay.
Now we see why, and.
Yes.
We'll get to that in a minute as well, I guess. All right, so let's move on to the superintendent's report, Shannon.
All right. I think you all got a copy, but I will go through it. I do have a couple of updates. So we are in the beginning stages of budget development for fiscal year 26. Caitlin will speak about, we, we sort of started with the joint, the JSC, Union 28 budget. And so got that ball rolling and everything will start to snowball from there. Principals have presented their draft goals for this school year to the superintendent. I've been meeting with each of them individually. I met with Ann today. So she has really presented some goals that are really aligned to, we have great, we know we have great student performance data right now in Chutesbury, but we certainly want to see that continue. We also want to make sure that we are looking at areas where there are opportunities for growth and capitalizing our professional development around those. And Ann has aligned her goals with that. I presented my goals on Monday. And they do align with the strategic plan, my entry plan that I had presented. I will, I did get some feedback about some things to add to it. And since it was just Monday night and I had school committee in Irving on Tuesday night, I will present those goals that, with the feedback that I got in December. I was ambitious when I wrote this and thought, I'll have time to do that. And it just did not happen. The union has secured a membership as part of the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth for all schools. If you're not familiar with that organization, they're a nonprofit organization. They provide training. Lots of collaboration and really around multidisciplinary approaches to education. Lots of professional development, community-based program building. I was, I'll be honest, I was a little surprised that we weren't already members because it's such a great organization, especially for professional development opportunities. For those, schools do a really good job of providing professional development that meets 75% of the needs of teachers, right? But there are some pockets of educators who, district-sponsored professional development sometimes falls a little bit short cuz we have finite resources. We're trying to leverage them around student achievement. And pockets like nurses and counselors and unified arts instructors, sometimes it's not as meaningful for them as far as directly applicable. It's, it's sort of a little bit removed. And this gives us access through our membership for those folks to be access content-driven PD for them, which is really, really great. It's nonprofit. It's governed by a board of directors. That includes everything from fire chiefs, police chiefs, school superintendents, higher ed. They were very willing to be flexible with us because they do bill by district and the union is technically four different school districts. But I was able to meet with some people and they billed us as one union. And so each school paid 25% of, a pretty low fee. I think it was Caitlin could, well, I'm not gonna tell her to say right now cuz I didn't tell her I was gonna ask that, but I think it's like $1,500 or something like that. But we're very excited to be able to, to bring that opportunity. I've been attending a lot of superintendent meetings as part of just the job and also the new superintendent's induction course. And there's a couple of state and legislative updates. The circuit breaker funding, which is the subsidy, the state funding for subsidizing special education has come in much lower than anticipated. It did not come in fully funded. And it is leaving across the Commonwealth about a 60 to 64 million dollar gap between what districts are really incurring for costs and what we are getting back from, from that account. The Mass Association of School Superintendents and the Mass Association of School Committees have been lobbying collectively to advocate for full funding for the Student Opportunity Act and the Circuit Breaker funding. They are looking, they are targeting the millionaire's tax because that came in much higher than anticipated. And so they are looking to get a piece of that pie. They are suggesting that they've asked all superintendents and that we share it with our school committees to draft a letter to our legislators asking for full funding and, you know, sharing the impact, especially in rural communities that are not fully funded circuit breaker that the, that is program cutting for, you know, when we look at that as rural communities. The problem is that there's a sense of urgency because every lobbying group is trying to get a piece of the surplus in that tax fund. So I'm happy to share, I, two other committees asked me to share a copy of the letter that I wrote so that they could use it as a rough template and just kind of tweak it to not coming from a superintendent, but coming from a school committee that I'm happy to do if that is a directive you want to take, but I'm, I'm bringing it to you so that you are in the loop about that call for some legislative pressure. And the only other update that I have is that Chutesbury, next Tuesday, that's the correct date, right, Ann? We have a visit from the Mass School Building Authority. They visit schools just to do sort of a facility check across the Commonwealth. They really are, their goal is to visit every school. I think it's every other year. They do not always get that done, but they are really having a push to get it done. And so they have scheduled every district in the union will be visited this calendar, this school year. But Leverett and Chutesbury will be visited on Tuesday morning. Ann is aware, they gave us sort of some things that they'll be looking for. They'll walk the building. The, I'll be there and we'll, we'll walk through it and we'll walk through it. And then they just really are trying to ensure that all students in the Commonwealth are in safe learning environments. So that's what I have.
I have a couple of things. One, Shannon, would you also point to the roof and say the town of Chutesbury paid for that roof?
I will be happy to.
Over time, by themselves. And then the other, the other part is, I think the finance committees should also join the letter writing campaign. So if you could send me a draft of that letter, I'll take it to the FinCom and we'll go from there. But these things affect the town budget as well as right ahead the school.
Yep, I will be happy to. Oh, I'm sorry. That's, sorry, that's my daughter calling me who didn't get the message that I'm in a meeting. But I will be happy to share that. And like I said, I did write it from the superintendent lens, but it gives you all the, the language. I think it'll be pretty user friendly and I'm happy to share it with both.
Great. Thank you very much, Shannon. Um, Director of Finance and Operations.
Oh, I think Leah had a question.
Oh, sorry, Leah had a question. I didn't see that. Sorry, Leah, go ahead.
Um, so in terms of the circuit breaker, what's the percentage that they're funding circuit breaker app for schools? And this is for next year, right, for F26 budgets?
So this is actually, so you know how this all works. It's actually coming in lower than anticipated in fiscal '25 budget. But they are, part of their real push is that they are expecting that next year will be very difficult. And so they want to really have the schools to start using their voice and to make it known that the challenges for when those, those, and even student opportunity, when we have these programs that come in and mandate lots of great things, but they don't fully fund and they don't always recognize without being reminded the challenges that that pose, that those programming poses when it's not funded. So they are trying, and it was a collective, a collective effort that they are lobbying as a group. The MSS and MASCE.
Okay.
I believe that was a big topic when I looked at the notes from, they had a November joint meeting. And they did, when I look at the notes that came from that, there was a lot of talk on budgeting and planning for the next fiscal year and the challenges that they foresee.
Okay.
That answer your question?
Um, I was just wondering, yes, mostly. I just, maybe Caitlin, do you know what the percent of funding is for a circuit breaker? Like, are we getting 80% or 75 or 70%?
I don't know the percent, but I know that we are about $10,000 under what we had anticipated in receiving for this year.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I can get you what that actual percent was, that, that, you know, the dollar amount is is accurate. So I, I So I, I can find out exactly what our, our reimbursement rate was and share that with the committee.
Thank you.
Caitlin, what was the, what was that amount again? Eighty to?
It's, uh, it's about a ten thousand dollar decrease from what we thought we were anticipating.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Anna.
So Joe Commerford is having a town hall meeting right now. Sadly, we can't attend, but both she and, um, ooh, I can't remember if it's Mindy Dom or if it's somebody else, um, have been very, very, no. Anyway, I keep getting notices from Joe and somebody else, um, about all the things that they're doing to try to convince the governor to increase that funding levels. So we do have very supportive, um, representatives that are working towards that. So while it's awesome to continue writing these people, it would be nice to, I, I don't know if like we can just write the governor directly as well. Um, and if there are other members of the legislature that are less district-specific, um, because I feel like we're just preaching to the choir when we write and, uh, that's not as helpful. So.
She is very supportive of that.
Yeah, she's great.
That's a good point. Um, yeah. Anything else for Shannon? All right. So now Caitlin, who we can't see, but we can hear.
I know. I'm very sorry about that. This is, I never would intend to do it this way. I'm also, I'm unable to share the, the budget because it says that sharing is not turned on.
Hold on, let me see what I can do. Try that now.
Oh, yep. I came up with a new options. All right. Are you able to see it?
Yes.
Can, can you make it any bigger?
Like that?
Oh, yes.
There we go. A little bit bigger. So this budget is going to be a little bit different. Um, when I came in a few years ago, I inherited a budget which incorporated all of the, um, all of the expenditures together, all bundled together, whether it was a grant or, um, or from the town appropriations or rural aid, they were, were kind of put together. So what I'm doing this year and what I'll continue to do is to separate those two things so that the presentation will show you is just our expenditures that are just coming from town appropriations. That's going to look a little bit funny because this is the, the transition year. And then after that, it will, uh, look a little bit more like it has in the past. So even though it looks like the total use of funding is three, is a negative three point nine percent, that's because I pulled all of the grant expenditures out of it. We've separated that into another place. And actually Chutesbury is unique that school choice was already separated. You never saw that in the uses of funding. For other schools, it was, it's a, a bigger challenge because that, those were also included. But you're, you were already kind of halfway there. So it's like a half a step, uh, moving in that direction. So the uses of funding have decreased. But with the removal of the revenue sources, because now that the, those uses, those grant-funded, uh, positions and pieces have been removed from the budget, it's also now counted as a revenue. It's, they're separated onto a different page. But what we have right now for a net total for town appropriation is four point nine four percent. And then here is the, um, the look at what that includes. Eighty point six of it is in instruction. Really, that means, um, that's the majority of that is salary positions for the school. In every school, we anticipate, you know, seventy-five to eighty-five percent of it being salaries. And we're, we're writing them ballpark. So for, oh, before I, I do that, let me back up for a second. The change from, um, the Union twenty-eight budget was passed last, uh, this past Tuesday. Sorry. We had the Joint Supervisory Committee meeting on Tuesday where the Union twenty-eight budget was passed. And there has been an overall increase for Chutesbury more than any other district because of their increase in enrollment. So we're at a five-year rolling average, so it's leveled out a little bit. But that has been, um, these, the, of the four districts, that has been the largest increase for the Union twenty-eight portions because of the increase in enrollment. And I can actually tell you what, so you, so Chutesbury went from a hundred and eleven kids last year to one hundred and twenty-seven this year, based on the October first counts. So it increased in enrollment and then, uh, an increase in the share of your, your Union twenty-eight portion of the budget. So for lines six through twenty-eight for the administration, those are all Union twenty-eight. That's why you see an increase for every one of those lines is just increase in your allocation of the budget. There are no other increases for that section. And then you'll see for, for the instruction section, most of these are just meant to meet what the new teacher's contract, um, what we call you in A and B or, um, you know, teachers, paraeducators, clerical, food service, custodial, what all of those are for next year. So we go through, um, a system of, of looking at every single person that works in the building and then identifying which step in column they'll be and then adjusting it to the new contract. And then kind of meeting that where it is. But because we're also in this change of subtracting, pulling out what some of the funding sources are, it's, um, it's hard to see exactly the percent increase for each of these. But if you, if you want more information or when you dive deeper into, to giving you kind of the, the components of what the contractual increases are, I can do that for you. So for line thirty-one, we have the cobbler contract has increased. That's one of the kind of very few non-salary increases we have. For line thirty-four, there was a lower amount for FY twenty-four. You know, the, it's not that the budget for FY twenty-five was fifteen thousand five hundred and we're keeping it at fifteen thousand, even though we only, you, you know, we only spent four thousand of it. That's because a lot of last year we funded out of circuit breaker. For teacher salaries, line thirty-five, this is where we started to get into that, that process of we're pulling out the pieces that the grant-funded positions and putting them onto a different page. So sixty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars were moved to grants and to early childhood revolving. Uh, the next line down, a hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and seventy were moved to school choice and title one. And we have somewhat of a reduced need for the contractual services under the inclusion specialist. And we have some more lines that are moved to school choice. We had an increase in the physical therapist. We're now sharing one PT over the four districts. For, uh, paraeducator salaries, we've moved some over to rural aid and school choice. And you're going to see all of these kind of put back together because the, the parts align, um, in the next couple of pages. And then some of the, the funding that in previous years, if we had a line like professional development or textbooks, instructional materials, that was the funding from the general account and grants included. And so now we're putting grants aside again. So those have been reduced to, uh, remove the grant funding portion of those lines. Um, I put a star next to line fifty-eight, testing and assessment materials. We are still looking to some assessments and so that line may change, um, in the next few months. But that is kind of flagged as, you know, it was two thousand, we'd still like to keep it two thousand for now, but we are looking into another assessment model. For line seventy-one, special education transportation, I've reduced that line because we're moving that funding over to circuit breaker. And the same for, we'd like to use rural aid to, for five thousand towards the fuel, ten thousand for school power. And then in line seventy-nine, grounds maintenance, that line is the same. But I also flagged that line because there is potentially a tractor that is, needs to be replaced next year. And we can, this school committee and administration, we can have conversations about whether, um, to increase that line to, to match whether we're able to afford the new tractor. And then for building maintenance, another ten thousand move, um, towards rural aid. For IDA grants, I am budgeting what we're receiving this year, which is forty-three thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars towards line ninety-six for the tuition to public schools for special education. So here's where our, uh, school choice and grants money is going to. And these will match up with the lines that I just previously shown. For school choice, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. This is a decrease. We need to decrease our, um, how much we tap into school choice at this point. We receive just shy of a hundred thousand dollars. And so to, we need to start decreasing what we're looking at as using for revenue from school choice. And I'd like to decrease it from a hundred and sixty-one thousand down to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. This year, uh, according, um, to our system, we rolled over about two hundred and fifteen thousand. So we still have a large amount in school choice, but it's not going to last many years if we overuse it. So this is the, the decrease in school choice. For title grants, we're going to use twenty-nine thousand, sixteen thousand towards the reading specialist, supplies and other expenses. And then contract, contracted service and supplies, conscious services for the other thirteen. For IDA grants, most of that is going towards the added district tuition. And then a small portion for, there's a specific IDA grant for early childhood, which will go towards, um, peer professionals for, uh, early childhood. For the REAP grant, we'd like to use sixteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. You know, it's the same amount as last year. We only kind of budgeted for this grant, what we received last year, towards our MLL teacher. Circuit breaker. For added district transportation. Rural aid. For some paraeducator salaries, um, teacher stipends, curriculum support, school power, fuel, building maintenance. Uh, we were asked last year to kind of increase for rural aid, what we're budgeting and what we're using as a revenue. And we can keep it that same amount. And then finally, early childhood revolving, going from thirty thousand to thirty-five thousand towards preschool teacher. So I'm going to keep sharing as long as you'd like me to, um, and kind of open up for questions.
Go ahead, Suzie.
Um, what is MLL stand for?
Multi-language learner.
So I didn't see it in the budget.
It's in the.
What line is it?
Yep. It is in our line thirty-five, teacher salaries. It's not considered special education. It's just in our standard teacher salary line.
Okay. And then, um, in the circuit breaker, um, it, section, it, I didn't see how line thirty-four, the summer school was being funded out of circuit breaker proposed for FY twenty-six. Am I missing something?
No, that's a good question. Thank you for letting me clarify. So, um, I, I just made that note to say that, um, last year it seems relatively low compared to what we have budgeted. And we didn't kind of budget lower to match what we spent last year because last year we used circuit breaker funding. So I just didn't want there can, there to be more confusion about why, well, if you only use four thousand for the program over the summer, why do you still have to have a fifteen thousand dollar line? And it's because, well, we ended up offsetting it with circuit breaker money.
Okay. I, I think also, um, this shift of how this is written, um, I, it's going to take me a while to understand and I might, um, come and see you. And so walk me through some of it.
Yeah, I kind of, I know I'm setting myself up for a year of conversations, but I'm.
I won't ask all the questions tonight. I just, um, I just make an appointment with you.
All right. Thank you.
I, I'm impressed that you caught that summer school thing right there. Um, so Leah, you're next.
Um, I, I guess I want to say thank you for splitting out the general fund from the grants. And I was wondering how cumbersome it would be to show like just the general fund for FY twenty-five so that we, so that we can have that comparison. Is it like, is it overly cumbersome to break that out? So that we can see the difference for general fund from FY twenty-five to FY, FY twenty-six?
It's not. I, I actually, it's a good question. I've been thinking about doing something like that, but I don't know exactly what would, um, what would be clear in comparison numbers. But I, thank you for asking because I'm, I would love to sort of play around and see if there's a way to show, you know, how the budget compares. If we didn't switch over to this, what would it look like? So yes, I'd, I'd love to do that.
Yeah. And I, I think, I, I think it makes sense and, and maybe just for, just for FY twenty-five, just, um, if you could split out the FY twenty-five general fund expenses, um, for these, for these lines that you currently have on the screen here, I feel like, I feel like that would be a helpful representation, um, as we transition to, to this new way of, of, of how you're, how you're showing us the budget. I think that'd be super helpful.
Sure.
Um, and then the other question I ha, um, I, just a point of clarification. So the column that's highlighted in red, that's FY twenty-six.
Sorry, say that again.
The column you have highlighted in red, that's actually the FY twenty-six budget, right?
Yeah, but it says FY twenty-five. That's a good catch. Thank you.
And then, um, I think you're, you're kind of explained this already, but I just wanted to clarify. So like for, for line thirty-five, teacher salaries. So we're keeping the FY twenty-six budget at the same seven ninety-three, even though sixty-three thousand is moving to grants because we're absorbing the increases for the negotiations. Is that why the line is only going down like three hundred bucks, but we're moving over?
Yes, I, it's interesting that they're so close in value, but it is exactly that. It's, it's a reduction because now I'm pulling out the, um, the grant-funded, uh, positions. But. Um, but with the increase in the contract and the um and natural step in column increases, it ends up being very close to the same, but that's kind of coincidental, but um, yeah.
Okay, and then um, for, for the school choice point that you brought up, um, I, I definitely appreciate you highlighting that we're, where we, we might be eventually overspending in the school choice line, and so you're trying to um get us back in line with what we get every year for that. Um, could you share more about um how certain things are shifting off of school choice and where they're shifting to? I think I saw like for the M L L teacher, um, there's a grant you're shifting that to. So can you share more about like the shifts that that you're thinking would help us get back in line with the, the annual amount that we get for school choice?
Yeah, sure. So um, I think as um salaries have increased for these positions and we've sort of um put some new positions into coming from school choice, the amount that we've used has gradually escalated. And so my intent for next year and moving forward and tracking what we will receiving will be to reduce it and to move positions from school choice to other grants or from school choice to the general budget and um and make sure that we are sustainable and that we're using the uh school choice funding to using it to match what we're actually receiving. Um, and this will be a yearly and continual conversation between me and the principal and superintendent and just looking at it so that we're not in a um, in a position where we're, we're really winding down those um, our special revenue account.
And as of now, you're feeling like we should be, we should still be able to have like a bit of a buffer in school choice and you're just like pre-planning to make sure we don't eliminate that buffer?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Suzie, did you have another question?
Yeah, I got a couple. Um, one, last year, I believe we moved the salary that um we share the position with Leverett into the operating budget, but I don't know where that is, what line that is. Um, is that, is that in there somewhere?
Oh, the M L L teacher position?
No, I think it was um Jessica's position.
School psychologist.
Oh, yep. So we moved last year, we took the ha- uh point-five adjustment counselor from Esser Grants into the general operating budget. And um, it's still there under therapeutic services, line
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, yep.
And um, and then I saw a stipend for the ins- music instruction. And is that something that was in the old budget somewhere?
Yes, it was in the old budget under line thirty-five teacher salaries, so.
Thirty-five instrumental. Okay, and then here's the philosophical part. And I'm not saying this is my philosophy, but um there will be some push from some finance committee members that um if a position is a regular position, it should be in the operating budget, rah 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 rah. Um, and this budgeting process of showing things out there in the grants. Um, I guess, I guess Leah's suggestion that I see both will be helpful. Twenty-five and twenty-six in a parallel universe. Um, that will be part of dealing with it, but and it was good that the um therapeutic services got moved into the operating budget under that paradigm, that, that we should be seeing operating costs on a regular basis in the operating budget. I'm not particularly that argument meant for me, but um I think it's gonna show a little bit more that there are regular positions being funded through school choice. Um, maybe there'll be some of that push against some of the grant funding too. Um, and I'm just preparing my s- um, my understanding so that I can explain how that happens. In some ways, when people talk about the fiscal cliff that Amherst Regional's in, that's part of this argument. Um, I, I feel like there's a very clear alignment um or there's a clear picture here of what positions, what um instructional positions are being funded through those grants. And then it's a little scary to hear, um, the state might not do circuit breaker as, as well-funded. And we are counting on the eighty thousand for rural aid. I didn't hear that number being threatened, but um I, I just, I'm just presenting that this is the tangle that we'll be walking towards and um let you know about it. And I'm not sure that there is any different resolution, and I do think you are showing how to use school choice and title grants and um, circuit breaker money um clearly in this document. But that's where some of the argument will come from.
Thank you for that context, Suzie.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else questions for Caitlin? All right, seeing none, we're moving on to Anne.
All right, sorry about that. And my screen is frozen, so I'm gonna go off of another device to um share with you. So I'm not sure what's quite, what's going on there, but um
This is like the night of technology, Saffir's.
Well, it's so funny because it did bring me right back to the Zoom days. That's why I knew I needed to have multiple devices ready to go with my report to make sure you could hear it.
Remember, do this, do this well.
Definitely. Um, I could start off with the, with the numbers. Um, our, our numbers look great for numbers of students that we have. Um, we have gained a preschool student and we did have um two different students that moved out. And um, like um, we were talking earlier Nate about uh Nate and I really catching up about the facilities update. Everything looks great. A lot of things have been recently done. And I do believe the town paid for the roof, I think, is what Suzie mentioned, which is a giant win. Bravo. Um, I am looking forward to doing that walkthrough on Monday to, to, to um really highlight all the areas. Um, Matt Foster and I really went through the, a detailed report. Uh, we also have the advantage of Andy who has been uh filling in here and there and, and really getting to um know the building on a, on a deeper level, which is great. We um have our safety committee has met now twice and they are currently working on drafting the safety responses, then currently reviewing all of our emergency responses. Um, and then kind of like the bigger things that, that might uh, that might happen and making sure everybody's clear about what to do. We've completed two fire drills in record times, I think it was under three minutes and um a lockdown drill, which went really well. We have our student council is, is up and running. We have three grade five students and three grade six students. And they are planning on uh doing some of our um activities and school spirit events, coming up with themes and helping to celebrate school pride. They helped us to promote, and there's actually a video too that was made for the um the vocabulary day, which was, was, was really exciting. We did a nice parade too, and um that was fun. We have encouraged students. They also decided to do a gratitude chain, which encourages students and staff to write what they're thankful for and create a chain that's in the cafeteria. Their um, their next mission is to plan a color engagement day on November twenty-sixth. And they divided up all of the staff and students into teams, equal number of teams. And we're encouraging them to wear different colors and then the students are gonna tally who the winners are for um color engagement. We also have uh their next mission is a talent show, so I'll definitely keep you posted. And that could be a great event too, if um, if you'd like to attend. I have to admit, there's a lot of talent at Chutesbury El- El- Elementary School, so that's a great one. I can try to make that be on a Thursday night and not on a school committee night. And hopefully um, I, we could, we could have you, it meets some people there. Our school council is also meeting and um, just like you were saying at the beginning, Jeremy, they're working on the school improvement plan currently and looking to see um what improvements need to be made and getting updates about curriculum and some of the past things that have been in school committee. We're also working on family engagement events with um the school council, sorry, school council. Some of the recent fun events, as recent as today, we had the PTO sponsored the Latinx uh dance and drummers to come to school for the last hour and introduce the students to um uh bomba, which is a type of Spanish dance that everyone got to try out. We definitely, again, have a lot of talent there, so that was a lot of fun for students. We've had um a very successful book fair run by um Heather and volunteers in the library. We've just completed conferences. The students did um enjoy a walk to the apple orchard and then did the apple store, which if you're not familiar, after the students pick apples, they go home and create different apple desserts and treats and then sell them the next day to help fund their fund, their field trips. Um, and they have recently gone on the UMass multi-bands field trip. That was for um grades three and four. And they were able to attend that incredible performance. And we've also had um a lot of uh school assemblies and opportunities for students to, to get together and uh celebrate being in school. So there you go.
Great, thank you. Anyone have questions for Anne about that rousing report?
I just, yeah. I just have one question. Um, you mentioned the school council working on a school improvement plan. Um, did you say they were looking at curriculum?
They were just looking at the updates. So in the original school improvement plan, the last school improvement plan, it references the um English language curriculum, like we're, we're not doing anything different with what's happening. It's just about updating on where people, where teachers are with the trainings, like with the math program bridges and with the um E L curriculum that, that they're currently using. So it's been in place. We also have um social emotional curriculum that has also been in place. So just kind of giving everybody um, getting some updates about that.
Yeah, I really appreciate the snapshot of all the things that have been going on. I feel like um the school council stuff, I often feel like I kind of miss knowing what's going on with that. And I know my son may enjoy, well, I won't say he really enjoyed the multi-bands concert, but he really enjoys going on field trips. And so um, I think that's been really great and I'm, I'm glad Mr. Cortina can make that happen. Um, that's a great resource.
Absolutely.
All right, um, and I lost my agenda. So uh, next up is the Amherst Pelham Representatives Report.
So I feel like I missed the last month's committee meeting, so there might be like a substantial amount of news that you haven't heard. Um ooh, so the new superintendent has um uncovered what she would describe as um subpar financial management procedures that have been taking place in the region. And so she had an audit done and is trying to um revamp a little bit of how the finance office is being run. Um, it's not clear, but part of the fallout of that may have been a really nasty letter that was sent to a whole bunch of school committee members and some other people and um also released personal information about a district employee. And so there's some fallout from that. Um there's, it's, there's always something in the region that's in crisis mode. Um, but uh, I think, you know, at the end of the day, once the superintendent really gets fully installed, I think we're gonna be a better-run district and that'll be really helpful. Um, so far, I think that she's doing an outstanding job and uh she just has a lot on her plate. And I think it's a little more than she anticipated and it's probably more than we anticipated and uh, so she's going to be overworked and hopefully not burnt out by the end of the year. Um yeah, there's not really any great updates on the track and field project. It's still moving along. I think um, Pelham has allocated CPA money for that. And Amherst has allocated additional CPA money for that and Leverett is choosing not to vote on it until their next town meeting. Um, so hopefully they will approve it, but it will not be until their standard town meeting because they don't usually have special town meetings. They just don't have enough business to do in their special town extra meetings. Um oh, so the other thing is that the superintendent is looking into the possibility of moving the middle schoolers into the high school next year. Um, in part because the middle school building is not in great shape and in part because it might provide some efficiencies within administration to have all of the kids in one building um and be able to use staff a little bit more efficiently. Um, so keep your ears posted for information about that transition. Um yeah, any questions?
I have one. I'm just curious. Like, do you feel like the superintendent's getting support? Generally, I know that that letter was kind of a bombshell and she had to respond to it. And I'm just like, do you feel like she's generally got the support of at least the committee if nobody?
Definitely has the support of the committee, definitely. Um, and I think she has the support of the A P E A mostly. At least, um definitely from the leadership and from, I think, the majority of the A P E A, which is brand new, right? Like, I think in the past, the, the relationship between the superintendent and the APA, A P E A, which is our teachers' union um, has been pretty rocky. Um, and so it's nice to see that there is some substantial support for her um coming from the teachers' union. Um, so yes, I think, I, you know, there's always people who complain and there's and then some people complain in, in like, you know, good in when appropriate ways. And apparently, some people just complain in really inappropriate ways, and so.
Inappropriate in public ways?
And anonymous and um illegal, really.
I mean, it would be nice, it would be nice to have some time where Amherst doesn't have some scuttlebutt going on for a little while, a little bit of steadiness.
She is in my superintendent's new leadership group and she is she's very upfront, um, which I think can be off-putting maybe, but she is so committed and reflective and I think I am enjoying working with her. So I really hope that she is able to, I think I, Anna's, my opinion is spot-on that we the whole area will be better for her serving in this way if we can get over these bumps and keep her, so.
I was, I was really impressed briefly when I saw her at the uh foretown, that first foretown meeting. Suzie?
Is the next foretown meeting scheduled now, Anna?
I think it is.
A rumor maybe the fourteenth, December fourteenth.
I think that sounds right. Is that? Let me just double check here. Yeah, December fourteenth.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions for Anna?
Is it gonna be at nine AM again?
Probably, yeah.
Probably, yeah.
Um, also, I don't, who, who here was at the last foretown meeting?
I was.
I have this memory of I have this memory of Amherst folks. At least partially agreeing to the idea of options A or B as far as the budget was framed. But Mandy. Is vehemently in a disagreement that she had any way thought that that was appropriate at all. And vehemently disagrees with the idea that Amherst kind of nodded to approve that. Path forward. Suzie, I can't hear you. I don't know why.
I would disagree that there was any agreement at all.
So you agree with Mandy?
Yeah, and well, I don't know how she's framing it, but um, Schutzeberry, when we went into it. I was really pushing for people not to start nailing down things when it's really, really, really too early. And so in fact, the meeting went, took a hard left turn when we start talking about consolidating. So we really, really don't know what the budget is and that those were ideas floated. But no, I would not say anybody made any kind of definitive. People talked about whether we would go up, use the base or not and whether they agreed with that idea, but not how that was a budget.
Yeah, I feel like what I remember was that um. Yeah, I feel like what I remember was that like in the end, everyone was like, we were very, everybody was kind of clear that nothing was being decided and nothing was.
No, nothing was being decided, but when she proposed like, I don't know, was it?
I was just looking.
Four or five different?
Six scenarios.
Six, six scenarios. I thought there was like a general consensus that scenarios A and B. Um.
Which was the ones.
That we should try to look forward towards and that the other ones would just put the district in a giant hole. And be a death spiral. Yeah, but.
I think that was kind of Dr. Z's position. I don't know that.
Okay, not, not the towns.
I don't know that was the towns. Yeah, but that, so the scenarios, the scenarios that Anna was talking about are like that all towns. Um, keep the six percent base and add four percent, which would be a two million dollar deficit for the Amherst Regional Schools. Um, or the scenario B or two was six percent gets rolled into the base and everyone goes up two point five percent. Um, which is only made a difference between like, it was like instead of. It was like a hundred, that went from a two million dollar deficit to something like. I don't even, my notes are wrong on this. I don't know. It wasn't a big, it wasn't a huge difference. Actually, I think that's what they were trying to show in those two scenarios.
Yeah, and then I went to the finance. Coordinating meeting at Amherst and the Amherst Finance Committee proposed a budget. That is going to be, I don't know exactly, they call it not a budget, but a proposal or something like that, but whatever, it was a budget proposal. That included only the four, a four percent base from last year, not a six percent full funded budget base. And then only added three percent to that base. Um, which in effect is less than a one percent increase in the budget from last, this current year to next year, which is. In my mind, completely untenable. So we have some work to do.
Okay. It'd be. Thank you, Anna. Um, so next up is the Union twenty eight report. Um, we, it was Leah and I who attended on Monday. Um. Sorry, I'm just looking at my notes and going backwards. There we go. Um. You know, we went over Shannon's goals, which uh, she presented here. Um. We, oh, yeah, I agreed to ask Nate if he wants to volunteer for an efficiency subcommittee to highlight the big picture possibilities of regionalization.
Okay, I did write it down in case.
I wrote it down too. I just haven't looked at it again since Monday. So uh. The, they're trying to form a subcommittee um, to just kind of go over the regionalization study that was done by the Collins Center at UMass last year. And just pick out um, what the kind of key findings are, places that there might be some sort of pathway. Um, but just because a lot of the committee members were not there for the presentation last year, that was like over an hour long and. It was a very long presentation, uh, just to kind of bring back to the general group, um, the most important pieces. So.
Can I speak to that for one second?
Please.
So I think it was um, when I stumbled across it, because it had sort of fallen off of everybody's radar. Um, but it is only a year old. Obviously, it was a, I, I believe it was the town of Schutzeberry who received the grant, who actually funded the study. Um, but um, obviously they're going to say, because from an efficiency standpoint, a, a region is much more efficient than a union. Um, but I think that's just in my short time here, that is not anywhere near where we are. So to do that, to study that doesn't seem like a good effort. But in that study, which was pretty comprehensive, um, they did have some ideas about how we could be more efficient. And leverage the resources we have um, without regionalizing, um, without changing any contracts. And I just, as the superintendent, wanted some direction about. What is the priority? Some things are simple, like, you know, bulk buying of materials across the union. Like, we don't do that and we probably should. Um, so I think. I, I, they're trying to form a committee to find out within this big study, what are the pieces? That we can with our current structure, look to improve, to leverage our financial resources and human capital resources. And you know, we have three other contracts coming in and there are, um, you know, if we could even just align things like. Professional development for teachers, um, that similar requirements across the four schools. That would allow us to leverage, you know, resources. Um, and, and there were some certainly practical things about um. Uh, things they suggest we should look into, but it really is for the. School committees to give me the direction about what your priorities are as far as pursuing in that efficiency study, if any. Um, and so Caitlin and I agreed we would sit on the committee, but um, according to the U twenty eight policy. There has to be a member from, would not be an official subcommittee, it'll be an advisory study group. So it will only meet during the duration of however long it takes. Um, so Caitlin and I will be there to hear your direction, but it really will be on the school committee members to go to the JSC. And say, here are our recommendations and then they would vote for that to be my priority, if that makes sense. Okay, now I'm mute.
So, anyway, Nate, um, I think what happened was uh, Lee and I both. Really could not take anything more on, so you just weren't there. So we said we'd ask you. Um, so if that's something you want to do, you can get back to me later. I'm not going to put you on the spot right now. Um, and otherwise we'll figure something out, uh, one way or the other. So uh, yeah, there was that. And then we just went over the budget with Caitlin, which she's just brought up uh, here again as well. Uh, and talked about our four point nine seven percent increase because of our student enrollment increase. Um, so, yeah, that's about uh, that's about all that we have. Not meaning, Leah, did I miss anything? Because you often pick up on something I miss and I miss a lot.
Um, I, I guess I'll just say to your point about us discussing the Union twenty eight budget, we did approve it. Um, and then uh, Lindsay, I thought um.
Oh, great.
Did a really nice job presenting um, on her goals for improvement. For um, supports for staff around um, SCL um, writing and uh. Uh, is it multi, MTSS, multi-tiered?
Systems of support.
Am I thinking of that correctly when she was talking about the tiers?
Multi-tiered systems of support.
Yes, um, so I thought she did a great job of walking through that. And then um, you guys didn't uh, necessarily get to hear Shannon's full report um. A- around her goals for this year, but Shannon, you're going to be sharing that next month here.
I am going to be sharing it next month.
Okay, um, and then other than that, uh, the budget sub um, met um. Met as well. And we just went over um, the budget, which was approved, the budget and personnel submit. We reviewed that budget, so that's all I have to add. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for catching on Lindsay too. Um, and the fact that we approved the budget, those two seem kind of major. Um, so yeah, that's all for Union twenty eight. Uh, CES, Jen, anything? You guys didn't meet in between, did you?
We haven't met yet, so next meeting is December eleventh. I'll have more after that.
All right. So that moves us to our last portion of tonight, which is the first reading uh, for deletion of organization of instruction. And students, the student harassment. Um, can somebody remind me or speak to why these are on for deletion? I know that was spoken to last time, I think, but um, do you know, Anne?
Um, it, oh, sorry, go ahead. I think they're up for deletion because we have new policies in place that have replaced them. Sometimes it's a matter of new language, updated laws, that sort of thing.
Okay, so uh, we should have read those and uh, we don't, do we need to vote on those? I don't think we need to vote on those, right? No, okay. So uh, first reading on sex-based harassment discrimination, um, curriculum development, student discipline and bullying prevention. As well as relations with non-public schools, communicable diseases and relations with police authorities. Um. So I don't know if anybody. Uh, we, yeah, so we have to have a first vote on those. Does anybody, so remind me, we can move to vote on them. And then we can discuss if there is, is discussion before we.
Yep, you'll move to vote on them and then ask for discussion.
Okay, so can I get someone to move?
I move to uh, vote on the first reading of ACAB, IGA slash IGD, JIC and JICFB.
It's actually, I'm sorry, it's the second reading first vote on the LBC, JLCC, KLG. Is the one we need to vote on.
Oh, we don't need to vote on the first read?
No, no, because it's just the, it's just the first reading on those ones. Sorry.
Oh, okay, then I guess I don't want to skip over those because I had some thoughts.
Yes, please, let's start with that.
Move to discuss, I guess, first. No, no need to move either?
No, you can just discuss it. Let's discuss it.
Want to, okay. Um, all right, so for IGA, IGD, I just had a question around. Whether it's typical for school committee to approve curriculum. Um, I think that policy was talking about that and I just wanted to understand if that was like a typical thing. I know I've seen it for like big changes into curriculum that the school committee will be involved and they'll get updates and maybe even vote. But I wasn't sure if that was typical. I'm not sure. Can you hear me? I can't tell if my, my screen is frozen from my end.
We can hear you, Jen.
Okay, perfect. Um, I think that that is one of the things that comes to school committee is to review that. I, I do want to say we don't, from what I'm seeing across the union, which makes sense, we don't stray very far. From the Mass Association of School Committees vetted and recommended policies. We tend to, to update and, and, and make them a little bit unique to our schools. But the big umbrellas, we, we don't stray too far from them. So this is a pretty typical. Um, policy. I don't have any concerns about it as an educator. I'm not sure if Anne does and I see Anna has her hand up.
My understanding is that, you know, it's not like we're. Digging into the nitty gritty. We generally get a recommendation from the school about the curriculum and then we just approve it. It's almost more like a rubber stamp than it is like an actual, like, I'm not sure if we agree with you. Um, but if we have some like very strong opinions about the curriculum and you think that the principal is doing the wrong thing. That is our opportunity to express our opinion.
Thank you.
Yeah, and as I understand, it really is, it's about changes to curric, like it's about changes to curriculum more than like. What books can we read in the sixth grade or any of that sort of thing? So.
And then my other question was, um, I noticed that it references high school program of studies in the last paragraph. Um, should we take that out? Because we don't really, okay. So I would move then to have um, the reference to high school programs of studies removed from IGA, IGD. Or I don't know.
Maybe we could just, maybe we could just change it to say including program of studies and just take out the high school.
Okay. That sounds good. Um, and then that was all that I had noticed in my first read of the. Policies, those, those uh, first read policies. So now on to the business of um. Moving to um, vote on the um, policy LBC, policy JLCC. And policy KLD. So moving up, moving uh, to have a final vote for next meeting, right? Is that one of, yes?
Yep, yep. So uh, Leah moved. Who seconded?
That's me, Jen.
Jen, thank you, Jen. Um, any discussion? I will just say, I did have somebody reach out and maybe I can put this in a new business next week. I had somebody reach out to me asking about what the role of the school resource officer was at the school. Um, and I know that kind of falls under the relations of uh, with police authorities, although it's, again, this is sort of boilerplate. Um, language on this, but maybe that's something we could discuss at a future meeting, Anne, a little bit.
Do we have, do we actually have a school resource officer?
We do. It's Officer Devin and um, he's uh, been pretty visible at the school. So he comes in at different times and um, he happened to be there when um, student council was meeting and he, but he popped in. He's um, he's got, he's been known to shoot some hoops with the kids on the playground and just really start to make a positive connection with students. So he's been a welcome addition for sure.
Okay, so thank you. Um, all right, so all in, so if there's no other discussion, um, just vote. Um, so all in favor? My, you, I?
Taylor.
Heard I.
That guy.
Okay, and the opposed? All right, then all. Uh, that passes. So then um, the last three are the final vote on the educational opportunities for military children. Educational opportunities for children of foster care and student absences and excuses. Anybody want to move?
I move to um, approve. The policy JFABE, JFABF and JH.
A second. All right, Nate seconds, Leah moves, uh, all in favor? Or sorry, any discussion, sorry. Okay, seeing none, all in favor? My, you, I?
Taylor.
Long goodbye.
Heard I.
Um, uh, any post? All right, so that passes as well. We have no need for executive session. Our next meeting's policy committee is December nineteenth. Uh, at six thirty, hopefully, we'll hopefully be able to just recycle that agenda and push it into December. Um, and so Jen, maybe uh, we'll invite you again to join us to talk about the homeschool um, policy that you wanted to discuss. Um, school committee is December nineteen seventh, Union twenty eight, January thirteenth at seven o'clock. Um, are there any other agenda items that people would like to put on next month's agenda? Okay, um, so yeah, anybody want to move to adjourn us?
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
So who? Nate seconded, all in favor? Yay, okay, we're done. Um, I'll see you guys next month, if not before. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm only going to refer to this as the cool committee from now on. So, very cool. Good job. Don't, I mean, it's all, it's all good, you know? Oh, sorry, you mute, you're muted.
I said we made it through. Next time it'll be smoother for sure. So thank you, Anne. See you soon.
Anytime. Have a great night.
You as well. Bye.
Thanks.